Welcome everyone for our special budget meeting. Have everybody here, I guess, maybe here, we didn't invite all departments because you're going to review what those may need. And where it go?
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Sir, any advice?
Here. Okay, um, so I think we're gonna share. You wanna maybe open up with some dialogue about where we're at with?
Well.
What you provided.
I just gave you our own budget. We have some other departments who are also asking for, um, bigger budget, if you will. Um, everybody's about out of money. I, if you look at some of these sheets, like you can see how much, like we use Musicport, for example, we do have to cover four municipal courts. We are mandated by the state to cover forty percent. And the way I've done the numbers and it's an approximate, but we are short by about a hundred fifteen thousand. Hundred fifteen thousand.
And those courts include what?
It's Warren, Niles, Gerard, and New Falls. Those four municipal courts, we have to supplement them by like forty percent. And as you can see, some are more than others, but like their percentages, like the Warren Municipal Court employees, we're already, we've already spent eighty-two percent of their budget and we are just now getting to August. So that's a big problem. So a lot of them are real high. It looks to be like in the employees on what we have to supplement that municipal court. The one here, Public Defender, Warren Public Defender, we're over budget by two hundred and six percent. So right now we have a hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars left in their budget. And we would need approximately a hundred fifteen thousand to get us to the end of the year for this mandated. The other sheets, if you will, there was a couple that I included here. And one was an over budget report. If you'll, you see the green, yes, this one. The over budget report, we have several things that are over budget. Our advertising, we're over budget. Utilities, we're at a hundred nine percent just yet on just one of ours. And we have many, and I mean many. Emergency utilities, we're over budget there. Geography is work, we go back to Warren Mee, we're over budget there. We have, I wanted to point, point out was our insurance I'm looking for. We're over a hundred seventy-eight thousand. Yeah, we had, we had budgeted for Corsa, we budgeted like four, if I remember correctly, like four hundred three thousand. See where I can find it in here. But we added, oh, it was four hundred thousand. That was our original. And our revised budget, we went to four twenty-four nine seventeen, we actually had to pay out six hundred three thousand, six hundred nine dollars. So we are over budget. I had to, I moved some money to supplement. We were over, we had a little bit left over in our vehicle insurance. And we moved that over. So that helped cover it, but we're still, we still need a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars to clean that line item up. It is paid for the year, but we still need additional a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Commissioner, that is your biggest bucket. It's, it's, that's your general liability, errors and omissions, and it's not.
Just give our names.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry. Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, Human Resources Department. This is, um, not just to, there's some thoughts sometimes, just want to make sure we're being transparent for every single employee, elected official, this cover, that bucket covers everybody. Very clear, only why. Errors and omissions, liability, all of that is in that bucket.
We seem to be in the hospitalization, life insurance too, we're, we're below, we're, we're diving deep on that one. For every department, it's not just money, it's just the health insurance has gone up significantly. So we're a little bit underwater as well. And then of course I have each one of our departments. Or the commissioner, with the exception of, I did not do maintenance and vehicle maintenance, they, they did their own. So I just have the ones that I handle to show where we are, we'll just use any of these, if you see the percentages on where we are, telephone, we're, we're at a hundred percent on that one. Utilities, a week had revised the budget to two hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred. And we, all we have left in that remaining budget is seventy-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty cents. We view seventy percent. And here again, we're late at August. So that's going to be for every single one of our utilities is going to be tough to deal with. We're gonna need some money. So these are, these are for your, your own department, but I, I don't, I didn't print out everybody else's, I didn't give up.
Commissioners, I can make a suggestion, our mandated services, now spoken with chair concerning them. Maybe it'd be a good idea to start there to look at what we need to do with our mandated services. Also, do we, in looking at the budget and with these departments, do we, we know we have to fund these departments, do we fund them? Do we partially fund them? Do we revisit this in two months? Or do you just try to, you know, go the whole ball of wax, which I don't think we can anyway, really, to be honest with you. The other consideration that we have, um, and I've been corrected, it's not, Christie, if you could correct me on it, it isn't a carryover. But it, it's in our commissary, you called a rainy, rainy day.
Reserve.
I reserve, reserve. Okay. Um, we have had some conversations about, uh, some bonds that maybe rather than reinvesting a certain portion that the commissioners may have be able to choose to draw on some of these. Uh, we just had a meeting today with our treasurer. And, uh, of course this would include you Augustine, uh, moving forward. In the investments, the bonds, and I believe that the commissioners have an approximate amount of twenty-five million invested in bonds. My understanding is, and I guess we'd have to work with the auditor.
As a friend or as a friend, or we don't do this.
You don't say investment.
Did Sam say that we would have to work?
Well, it was just a general discussion.
Oh, so.
But also.
I'm not ready to make a decision.
Not to make a decision, but it's something to consider if we're, if we're low on, on the money to, you know, to be able to fund these departments. But starting with mandated services, uh, you know, Sheriff, you have any input on that?
Well, I, we don't have choice, you know, it's important, we have, we have to do that, have to pay that. We actually pay their payroll, part of their payroll, it comes out directly from us.
Pay portion or all?
No, we pay forty percent.
Forty?
Forty.
Okay. For our mandated service, we gotta find out.
I think we should, I think we should just go through and see what the numbers are and then.
Yeah. We'll see where we.
Our numbers are, everybody else's aren't.
And what the request.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, it just.
I don't know how many to sit. At this point in time. To see where we're at. And, and we know the utility is going to be in each cost.
That it's, it's bad. It's already bad.
We got our budget, two million dollars.
Yeah, we did. I think it might have been.
And that's without maintenance.
And maintenance, so.
Income. Maybe we'll go to maintenance next, then you set their case.
Yeah. Harold?
Uh, Daryl Donegan, Purple County Facilities. Building area. We've used, uh, ninety percent of our payroll funds. Think with this, this next pay cycle, that's this is, you know, a week away, two weeks away. That total is seven fifty-nine five ninety-two.
That means you're seven hundred fifty-nine thousand short?
Correct.
Daryl, is that for Alex, did you actually say they were timed? Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, Resources. Is that employees, per, workers comp, is that all of that?
That is not all of that.
Okay.
That is, that is just strictly just payroll.
Passive encompass. Yeah, so it's not really seventy-nine, it's way higher, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. So, um, we just need the whole roll up, so what we would want to do is do the perfect salaries, so to include in the entire thing, the salary is the first. Workers comp, life insurance, health insurance, uh, Medicare. Medicare, workers comp's done, but yeah. And I don't want to come in because other people watching would say, so typically in the beginning, you do receive for that. But we're done with that for the year, so we could transfer that and some of another.
You think how many, Daryl, how many hours overtime do we have on our yard commitments?
Um, How much hours as of year-to-date?
Yes.
I don't know the number exactly. Um, but when it's not fair, bigger, like Karen said, the summer, but I don't have precise numbers.
Although we have callouts, we produce that tremendously. We've taken all call out, leader calls on ourselves, that's no longer going to the employees. All the building monitoring systems, those are all coming to us, they don't produce callouts. The overtime itself has been reduced tremendously. I just ran that report and I don't think I have it with me. Overtime paid-to-date. Hundred ninety-five thousand.
I don't know how when we were zero overtime without permission. I mean, that's one time, the major officer for permission.
Yeah, a hundred and eleven thousand of that was just from, uh, January, that'd be, most of that was stuff that.
But so, there still was, the mandate is still rolling in last year about zero overtime without permission. And even like, even yesterday.
Um, it was for anything that came up. You, we had a very significant winter, you knew that they were getting over a hundred and eleven thousand, not dollars. It was almost every single day, but they were out here every morning at three AM, five AM. You knew that.
I knew that.
That part is.
And then of course.
So anything above and beyond that is different. But there have been a couple things they did ask for, and we did know that there was issues with the jail boilers there. We know that, you guys bought the boilers, so I know that we know that because, I mean, you proved it, so.
A hundred ninety-five thousand, it's awful high, that's not just the time that the jail boiler went down and snow incidents, that sounds to me like there's more in there than that.
Yes, we'll have to look at that.
There is, there was one issue at the court that we had, that we had to work over and take care of.
That was an order.
That was an order, okay. The rest of it was all calls. Urgency, HVAC, water issues, anything like that, nothing was nothing was scheduled or, or done after hours.
There's a difference between emergency and scheduled.
Yes, this was all.
What we stopped was this emergency stuff, well, excuse, scheduled stuff. Where they were pre-scheduled.
Still pay a two hundred thousand dollars in salaries of overtime. Yeah, but it's more than that previous years, my understanding. I don't want to get into that.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that.
But I just think we need to look at it. Discuss that amongst ourselves.
And it's not, and alls I can say is, it's not cheap. Working overtime is not cheap. So they make a lot of, they make good money. And then you compound that by time and a half, and you compound that by coming in and filing on holidays, which they have to, because we have twenty-four seven operations commissioners. This is, this is a big deal. This does, that number does look, again, I'm not going to quote it on the record, I'm not saying it looks a hundred percent accurate, but it looks a lot better than what it was, that's what I can tell you.
Yeah, and, and.
Trust me.
That type of.
We have twenty-three town buildings, I mean, you know, twenty-three buildings that are getting, I mean, it's, this is what it takes to run twenty-four hour operations, the jail alone. If they get a call, we have to go out, we can't say, sorry. Boiler doesn't work, oh, well, doesn't work like that, nine-one-one. I mean, yesterday alone, you know, these things are gonna happen. That's why we need to reserve those funds for pure emergencies, and now what's happening? And we have to stop, so.
So. Any, any house? Daryl?
No, actually, that's the biggest request. There, I think we can squeeze back with the rest of it. Unless we have, unless we have a.
We're, we're sheriff's here, Mr. Soft Office.
Well, if something breaks in the jail, if something, if something goes down in the jail, does that come under your budget? Yeah.
Yes. And it's overtime, that's what I'm trying to say.
But I mean, the equipment also, right?
The equipment, the jail, the equipment, all the commissioners' buildings, as well as, uh, fleet vehicles.
That's correct, yeah. That also, thank you, Daryl, that's a very good point, that also doesn't take into account if we have an emergency need for a vehicle. That's including building and vehicle maintenance, so if the sheriff's office, sheriff already needs service immediately, that's what they're calling out to do, we, we don't have any options when it comes to that. I think one vehicle was just totaled, it was, we actually, two totaled, so. I only know that for instance, when, when employees hit a deer, it happens, the sheriff's appears at all hours of the night, the twenty-four seven operation, so it does happen.
Good commissioners, we know we're rough, but. Well, I, and I'm, and if I can make an early suggestion, I already made it, that some of these numbers that we're hearing, um, we may consider to give portions and revisit this.
Well, I think.
Well, we would have to. We were even discussing it right now, even if it was half. Right, two, two payrolls. Thank you, Daryl. Move to smiling Dawn.
Dawn Zinni, can I come counting report? So originally we came in and asked for one point two four five. We were awarded one point one, and I am short right around a hundred and twenty-five thousand in payroll. And some things that I've done, I froze hiring, one of my thirty-year employees retired, brought in someone that, um, new, at a zero. Um, we also implemented that, um, five-dollar surcharge, which so far has brought in thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. And we have brought in a hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-two more this year than last year so far. Of course, um, four hundred and twenty-two thousand moves out to the housing trust fund. But that's all my numbers for, um, and I'm still a fourth person in my office and in my.
I see you, you're copied on two sides of the paper, same thing. So, Dawn, you say you're, you're one twenty-two, well, one twenty-three. Okay. Pretty, pretty simple.
That's just paper.
Where would you, where do you?
Well, we have some office supplies, we've already used that, we have envelopes and different things, so I'm hoping right around one fifty by the time the end of the year comes around, it shouldn't be any more than that.
Commissioners, Sheriff, anybody, anybody have any other questions for? Or? Mission? No. Let's move around the room. And other.
That's a. Good afternoon, people. I just want to remind, um, commissioners that the auditor's office brings in revenue to the general fund. In fact, the auditor's office portion, the estimated revenue for the general, I'm sorry, sorry, the. In fact, the auditor's office portion, the estimated revenue for the general fund for this year, uh, three million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Most of this is from conveyance fees, and conveyance fees are the four dollars for one thousand collected by our office on non-exempt property transfers and the fifty dollar per parcel and offering. In the first camp of this year, we brought in.
Fifty dollars or fifty cents?
Fifty cents per parcel, that's for, that's for just every transfer. Exempt transfers are things like if you do a quitclaim deed to, like when my husband and I, uh, were getting ready for, with his illness, we, um, part of our prep for his, and, and life was to put my deed in, in my name, our deed in, put in my name, and we did a quitclaim. That would have been an exempt transfer, so we wouldn't have paid that conveyance fee, but we would have paid fifty cents. Uh, and those are by statute, no sense. Um, in the first camp of this year, we brought in one million, six hundred ninety-four thousand, two dollars and sixty-eight cents to the general fund of that amount. One million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred six dollars was from conveyance fees. The budget approved for my office in March was three point four million dollars. But remember that of that three point four million dollars, our office provides three million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, or ninety-seven percent of our budget. Of what? Uh, the board of commissioners had been given a list of my office's mandated duties more than once. But I think it's important to note, in addition to the services mandated by statute that our office provides, we also provide IT services to almost the entire county government, supporting all other mandated services. When I took office, we had, in twenty-three, we had forty-three employees. I felt that we had way too many in certain areas and not enough in others. As people retired in those areas where I felt we were overstaffed, I let those positions go vacant and created positions where I felt we were understaffed. The result of this reorganization was that at the beginning of this year, we had twenty, um, two employees, we now have thirty-nine. I want to remind the commissioners of the following ways my offices work to save money in our budget. We worked at saving non-payroll, but our biggest cost is here. Chief Deputy Hannigan's pay has been frozen. Pay increase for certification was promised to my wait-to-medicate employees, and that is also. No overtime unless it's an emergency, pump time is encouraged to save money. Um, we can't mandate that because of our CBA, but most of, I think pretty much all of the time it's been, uh, they cooperate with me, very, very closely. We lost three employees since March and have not replaced them. Since my pay is statutory, absorbed costs personally, and see the office just under fifteen hundred dollars, um, with plans to do. Through these efforts, our variance has been reduced from three hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents to two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Most of this had been through, through collections. Last week, Commissioner Malloy made a statement about layoffs, implying a statement about, uh, layoffs, implying that my first statements about layoffs were somehow inaccurate or exaggerated. I did, in my letter to the commissioners on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, state that with the proposed three million dollar budget, I would need to lay off about twenty-five percent of my staff. Since then, two things have occurred. The final approved budget was increased by four hundred thousand, so it's now three point four million. And we had three resignations, one in IT, one in real estate, and one in GIS tax. These two things have brought us, bought us time, but did not eliminate the need for layoffs. At the beginning of April, my office informed the board of commissioners of the existence of money available from a canceled carryover in Congresses, which is now at about eight hundred thousand, over eight hundred thousand. The data board also requested they use a portion of this to properly fund IT through my county's budget. With the support of the union, I delayed laying off people in the hope that the board would fund the office appropriately. On June tenth, the board meant to discuss the budget again. This also raised hope that the board would act, especially when media reviews were discussed. So I continued to delay. I also want to remind Commissioner, Commissioner Malloy, that he also requested that offices and departments delay layoffs. With the delay and improper funding of my office, there's a correct price. Layoffs will be broader. There'll be more people laid off because the board needs to understand that if nothing changes, all my employees will be laid off October first, twenty twenty-five. My office will close at that time, and no functions will be performed. I want to refer you back now to the revenue side of my office that I. We will be unable to generate revenue if we are closed. For just the conveyance fees, the county will lose an estimated five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue. Both Commissioner Malloy and Commissioner Hernandez, who closed to the media last week, talked about mandated, taking precedence over non. If my office is forced to close mandated services, not just in my office, but also throughout every office in its county, will be. Commissioner Bernard said that you must prioritize needs over wants. The two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents is needed to keep the auditor's office open and to continue both mandated services it provides, as well as support it provides for other mandated services.
Well, thank you, Colonel Martin. First of all, you're coming in lower than where I'd be at the time, but uh, comments that might have been made by Commissioner Roy or myself weren't to single out you or any other department here, all departments are important in this county. Um, we were, I was merely saying that we know that the mandated services absolutely need to be, uh, funded because they're mandated.
I understand that.
I don't, I don't see commissioners, this number's coming in a little lower than what I thought. But.
It's lower because we reduce the variances because of non-hiring.
I understand. I understand, um. Okay, so we know where we're at, any questions, commissioners? Commissioner? No, uh, I don't, it's like this side.
One, four.
Do you figure what we're going to?
I can.
Thank you, yes. Mark, Sheriff, I think it's okay. Um, Tim, you have anything?
No.
Or just, you're here with Mark?
Yes.
Those are the departments we have, right? Those are the departments we have, right?
Yes, we've got.
Okay.
Already given that uh. For sixty-five thousand.
Okay, so about the poll elections.
We have not done anything. They're not here, but they.
Yeah, the board would be what, two fifty?
Two fifty, seven, four, oh, three, four.
What's that? Well, we will be one, seven, nine hundred or something.
And that's without, that's without, that's.
That's what, that's, that's slave with maintenance, not with us. I added in one hundred fifteen for the meeting boards without that. We don't, we really don't have a choice on that. So we are at one point seven zero six.
And. We have nine hundred, where?
Nine hundred thirty-one. Some of the overages. Carryovers that were canceled out.
Two hundred fifty thousand that uh. Treasure, uh, I have a cousin talked about today, has that been updated? In with the auditor's office? The two hundred fifty thousand, he said.
He had to, it says.
He sent an email right before we came up here uh that. Tracy has made revenue, but we are uh meeting with the budget commissioner Monday to discuss all of the accounts, because we have lots of accounts that haven't received anything yet. Um. Uh, we have a few that were maybe overresigned, so we have to. To put the.
Shall we have a, about the new figure Monday for us?
We're gonna talk about it at the budget commission meeting.
How do you get that figure?
Nine hundred thirty-one thousand.
Probably at our.
One point one.
I don't expect it to drastically change though, based on what we've seen from other accounts. We're going, there's a bunch of accounts that haven't budgeted anything, but have received revenue. They're not significant. We're going to increase those.
Was it like that, two hundred fifty thousand?
Yeah, the property taxes though is a little high, so we need to reduce that. We have some transfers from. Uh, things that we have to put in there, so we need to look into all those. That was discussed at our last budget commission meeting, that we were going to look at it. At our next one.
So clerk records, they're okay?
Yeah, they did not, they did not send a new revenue, they gave additional funds.
Actually, we've talked about Chrissy.
I'm gonna ask you a question. Are you, for your, for your employees, your budget account? Where are you good till? I mean, I mean, do you have enough money in there for one or two or three more payrolls?
I've, I've committed through next payroll to my union. Um. We, I mean, we can, we can make the next one after that, but I, what I've committed to is that. So I've committed to one and I can definitely do two, but it's getting tight and tight each time.
No, I do, I.
And you understand too that if we have to, um, Mark, you're a trouble county auditor, I apologize. Um, that if we have to give notice, if we end up having to lay off people. That requires notice, it also costs money. That, that, you know, I had given you guys, I'm sorry, the board, a um, an estimate of when I would run out of money completely in that payroll, right? Uh, I've given to you, I believe, the last time that I spoke to you. Um, and I, I, that, that is, and I said at that time, that's running, you know, the wheel, running the wheels off the car, right?
So in a payroll cycle for two weeks, how much money do you need?
For two weeks, we do, for a general fund.
Just for a rough figure.
Well, general fund is about. It's about a hundred and three, I think, with mine, right? It's about a hundred and three thousand, general fund.
That cover everything, though, so other than the general fund, that's all we have to worry about then?
That's all you have to worry about, the general fund. You're not, our, we have, we have a second, you know, we have a second fund called the real estate assessment. So some of our real estate functions, like our crazers, like half the GA, GIS tax, we have those employees, half of those. Our GIS administrator, things like that, they can legally come out of our debt, our REA. So we're taking what we can out of our REA, absolutely, we've maxed what we're, what we're legally allowed.
Every two weeks you need a hundred thousand.
Uh, about a hundred and three for general fund, yes.
So a hundred and three thousand, if you're only asking for what, two ninety-three, how much does that come up?
Because we have to pay an appointment, we lay.
No, no, I mean, you're asking for two hundred ninety-three thousand, but if every two weeks you need a hundred and three, how many papers have we got left? What am I missing here?
We have about twelve papers.
That's what I'm saying, what am I missing?
We're entering.
We are short because I projected what we're short, the two ninety-three.
You understand?
Yeah, she still has the money, the money's still there.
I'm projecting that, that.
But that is for staff rate, we still have, that running out of money doesn't mean we're running out of her salary. She'd be still required to pay her. So that would still be there, and we also had to just for, we're gonna have to pay an appointment for.
And we're gonna have to pay.
But what I think the commissioner is saying is, if you're only, two hundred ninety-three thousand only gets you through three pays, so we got way more than three pays left. So how, how are you only asking for two ninety-three, but you're saying you can only go one more pay?
No, I'm saying that's what, I said, I, I said that's what I've committed to, is with my union is one more. And I'm committing to those because.
Because we want to be prepared for the end.
Before layoff notices, right? I am talking about when I have, maybe we're not understanding, if I, if I, okay, if I.
Let me ask a simple question, let's forget, let's forget, let's forget layoffs, how much money do you have in your salary account? How far would that take you?
How far would that, I can tell you exactly how far it would take you to, to mid-November if we run the wheels off the, off the bus, that's what you're asking?
Well, the wheels won't be off the bus if you get more money, but you have enough money in your salary account to carry you to mid-November.
Correct, but if we.
So then you only need, that's why you, okay, now as you're becoming clear, that's why you only need two ninety-three to.
Correct, correct, okay.
Which would make sense.
I, I thought you were asking a different question, I apologize, but, but we have, yes, but we can't.
No, I, I.
We can't afford to take it to the end of the road because we have to plan.
Unless you get to two ninety.
Unless we know we're gonna get that, that we can't do that because we have to plan. This is what I've tried to be proactive all along. And explaining about the net, if we don't have this, this is what will happen. But we also have to have a commitment well before that time because if we're going to do. As I said, I would have to lay everyone off October first. Giving layoff notice, you have to give ten days' notice to the, to the uh, to the union. They will come back and, and, and do, there's a lot of back and forth that happens, so that notice will have to happen well before October first. So we have to know if we're going to get all or some, at least.
You're not gonna be laying anybody off, Mark. I can tell you that. I don't think she's, I'm not gonna be laying.
But in other words, what you're saying is I'm either gonna lay everybody off.
Well, we've delayed it because, because of delaying the layoff, it's got us to that point. And, and even though some of our folks are paid out of REA.
But Martha, you walked out here when we had our first budget meeting and said you were gonna have to lay off ten to fifteen people immediately, and that was six months ago. So how does that change?
I explained that in here and I'm gonna explain it again, and maybe you'll hear. I said that on March fourth, when it was three ninety dollars. You put it to three point four. That was tw- I said twenty-five percent of my, of my employees at that, when it was three. You added four, four hundred thousand. I also had three people leave. I delayed, I said with the support of the union, with the encouragement of the union, in hopes that we would get. I never overstated, and I didn't say immediately, I said people first, because that was what would have been the budget, sorry. Because if you lay off more. Or if you lay off earlier, you lay off less people. If you continue to burn through the money. With the same amount of people, you have to lay off more people to get to the end of the, of each.
What percentage of that would be mandated versus non-manded? Because we're looking at the same thing with janitors and everybody else and maintenance and, as you have IT.
At this point, the IT, IT is not statutorily mandated, but it supports everybody else who is.
Guys, first two points.
Chrissy Sarah from the auditor's office, I know you're wondering like why we wouldn't be laying off certain people, we'd be laying everyone off. She would put. Uh, issue a layoff notice, but we're being told by our union representative that they would come back with, and this is how the other unions work, is we work until there's no money. We don't just lay off a few people, because what if we lay those people off and you end up giving us money later? Then we laid off those people for nothing. So their theory is that we work until there's no money and then we all don't work.
And the other part, you ask, you ask how many are mandated, we can't just pick and choose to lay off people who are non-mandated. It doesn't work that way. My CBA. It's, and again, I will remind you that I inherited this. I didn't, I didn't form my union, was formed a month before I took office. The CBA was approved a month before I took office. I have to work, I have to play the hands I dealt. I have to lay off according to seniority. So that means. If somebody is mandated or not, if they are in that way in seniority, I have to lay them off.
Non-union have to go first?
I, I quit, and if this is again. In accordance with the union, it's, I'm, uh, we are in agreement with the union, we would just lay off. Starting with, if they're mixed in, I don't know what it is. It doesn't matter if I do it that way, when we get to October first, everybody would need to go to this general fund.
But in general, Commissioner, just in general, I'm not just talking to auditor orders, in, in general, union, non-union can't be mandated by union, that, it doesn't work that way. For our CBA, only applies to the bargaining level employees that are listed very clearly in the appendix, it's very clear. And also something that we tend to commingle is, it doesn't work the opposite way as well. So unless you adopt a need to for certain languages within that CBA, for example, our pay, okay? That's why I have to do all those things to make sure that it's legal, we get audited on that. It doesn't mean just because I signed twenty-four ninety-three contract, I'm gonna be very clear, that I just get that raise, that everybody gets that raise. That's not how that works. I then bring in to the board of commissioners who adopted the PCL back to nineteen ninety-four, I mean, this is going a long time, but. Just to be clear. When we're talking layoffs, you don't want to commingle, because there is, to be honest with you, there's a way different process and. All of your, you'll, you're obviously has, you talked about that, and she's, she's working through that, it's not the same. So they have no right to say you have to lay off the non-bargaining person, it does not look like that.
And it wouldn't, and, and at this point, um. Two of our four nine union are the first tip. And anyway, regardless of how you look at it.
I also want to caution the board that I do have a few departments in our offices where the non-union makes less than the union, just so you're aware.
Well, and in our case, actually.
I know, I, I'm.
Our, it, Mark, you're a trouble county auditor.
Our, so that would say union.
Our three. Three of the four nine union. Make less than the majority of the union.
And that is a common term that people see in many offices.
The only one who doesn't is Mr. Hannaford, but I will remind you that Mr. Hannaford holds down two jobs. He's the director of IT as well as my chief deputy, he had a pay freeze, and he would be laid off along with the rest of the office. And he also doesn't, he also doesn't make the most of my office. He doesn't make more than, he makes, he may, there is at least one, I have to, I have to look at my list, but there is at least one union person in this.
So with this additional money, are you contemplating with giving him a raise?
No.
Okay, well, because I keep bringing up that he hasn't, you know.
No, none, none of the things, this will not, this will, that, the two ninety whatever, does not restore us to those three people. It does not change anything that we've done already. I bring it up because I want you to understand that we've done what we could to save money.
And that's why I bring it up. One more thing that I also just wanted to make sure the board of commissioners is aware of, if we get Alexius Prince person to the payoff status. A lot of times, I'm not saying we're there, so don't, but a lot of times those non-union people then have to pick up all of your work, that's, I mean, or you can't provide services, that's just how it goes, so. Something that you just, I'm not saying it hurt, I'm just saying it everybody's.
If, if we can't meet the needs of everybody, because we do, we have a list here, they share, you said you're like one point seven right now, right?
Yeah.
If we could, is there an option of the county going to a four-day work week or going to every other week a four-day work week in every department? To save money so that we can all continue to work, collect the money that they collect, do the stuff that we do, but we, we have a four-day work week?
You cannot implement that, commissioners, we've already, um, Alexium Johnson, which you cannot implement that in the latter, you can't make that, you can make that for the people underneath your appointing authority, sure. What you cannot do is you cannot implement that for auditor, you cannot implement that for prosecutor, you cannot do that, and also they have different contracts as well. So there's multiple things, you have to again look at it as the union, non-union, and then the elected official and the appointing authorities, that's a, that's a multi-facet answer, I'm sorry, Bill, I'm looking at you, but. I, I know what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm sorry.
My understanding, Martha Yoder trouble county auditor, my understanding in my dealings with the representative from the union. That I actually have to give a layoff notice before we can even talk about this.
That's correct. So the ten day is a, it's a ten day notice that we have to provide for her specific union, we have thirteen, well, we have nineteen technically. Um, everyone is different, it's not a one-size-fits-all hour, that's where you need to default very heavily to your A star and work with, because it, it's not as. She has some different nuances in her contract that others don't, and vice versa, it is very, very tricky. And if you move and make one wrong mistake, you're gonna end up in arbitration, which is gonna cost the county more money. When you're just, you know what I mean? So we need to really make sure we're thinking about all of that.
And, and another part of Martha Yoder trouble county auditor, another part of delaying layoff has been trying to avoid. Grievances if we didn't need to have a break, if we didn't get to that point, um, it's. That's why I've been delaying it as long as I could, but at a certain point, unless I know that we're going to get some money. I am going to have to do a layoff. There's just, I won't have a choice.
And, well, looking at our income, I, I think we're gonna be really close on, on the employee side of it. Thing that scares me is you kill it, so, and. You know, I, I'm hoping we can get by without laying anybody off this year. You know, you think we could do that, it's just the money for the utilities. They have, they've been to somewhere to come up with some of that. But I, I really hope that we're close enough that we can give everybody's workplace easy period through, okay? And, and the good part is that you didn't lay off anybody, and maybe we'll have to do that, all right? And we said that, let's take a look at it now. So, you know, we probably have what, a million, two million, three, something like that, around, so probably need another four or five hundred thousand. Hopefully, we can get. Well, you know, and if we, we save from laying off employees, that, like I said, the only thing that really scares me are the utilities. So we're just gonna have to find another way for that.
Well, this is why I say, Commissioner, um. We've discussed it, not amongst the commissioner, but I think we should discuss, you know. Delegating those monies, but not necessarily do we have to go. All the way, I mean, we can go.
Well, that's what I'm gonna, I can't look at it.
Or we could go two hundred.
Ask her how much.
This and it.
I understand, and I, and, and.
You know, I mean, we can look at sure. Same thing. Right? To make sure that you don't have to worry about layoffs.
And, and just, Martha Yoder trouble county auditor, just going back to your question, I want to reiterate, uh, where, where it runs off the rails, I want to reiterate again. That's the end of the track, and there's no money for layoffs, and layoffs cost money. We have to pay fifty percent for unemployment, and the thing that I don't know that people necessarily have, anybody who's thinking about the layoffs. I've had to put a lot of time and effort into trying to figure out how much this would cost and, and where, you know. Go through and figure all that out, well. Because of the way our pay periods, and it wouldn't be laying off till the, to the very end of the year, it would be laying off to the end of the last pay period. And because of that, we would still be responsible for hospitalization for December. So I had to figure that into that when I was, when I came up with that, how much the cost.
I have another quick question for you, um. This tax, free taxes, this extra week, how, how much you think that's gonna cost us? I mean, just, just a roundabout figure, I mean.
We can. We can, we can kinda get something.
I mean, it's nice that the governor did that, but you know, it's costing the county.
Because it's, first of all, just so you, Martha Yoder trouble coming out of it, just so you understand, this is the longest it's ever gone. This is not a tax holiday, it's a frequent vacation, okay? So it's two.
Two weeks now.
Two weeks, so that we, we would, I, we can say whatever half the. Half the average would be.
Yeah.
But we, we kind of allow for that in our estimated revenue, but the other part, and we do get some. Money, it comes through a different source, it comes through LGF, uh, local government fund. They kinda make it up, but it does.
Very minimal.
It's minimal, it doesn't.
It's only up to five hundred dollars.
Well, I, I get that.
What, the maximum.
Yeah, so if someone buys some two thousand or three thousand, I'd still get taxed.
But those people don't do that, they, you know.
Refrigerator, it's two hundred dollars. Now, now they buy refrigerators, appliances, things like that during that tax break.
Yeah, well, they're gonna buy that.
Yeah. Right, and then we tried to factor that in, we did, we estimated revenue.
Did he increase the amount back to the, to the local government?
I haven't gotten any kind of communication on it. We just. Like, oh, we got a little bit of that, right? And it's hard for us to predict and plan, I apologize.
Oh, no, I, I. I, again, I think the whole point is, you know what, we don't wanna lay off anybody, the numbers I think are closer than we anticipated. Except, you know, and it scares me, the utilities, and we have to work around that, but hopefully we can, we can keep everybody on board.
Well, it's teach us a lesson too, cause we may be able to squeak to the end of this year, if our budget next year is the same. Then these other positions that are going unfilled right now, every department head needs to think, do I ever need to fill that position again or? Cause next year's budget isn't gonna be like, we're giving everyone more money. You know, but they may be on the same budget next year they had this year.
I get that, and, and they should, they should do that too.
There's going to be, Martha Yoder trouble coming out of it, there's going to be some increases and I'm looking at. Alex and I'm thinking, we're probably thinking the same thing, hospitalization. And that's just, it's, it's, stuff goes up and, um, I'm gonna, I was supposed to be. And in bargaining right now and I'm not, and I don't know how that's gonna end up, uh. I think, I, I've had some positive, a lot of positivity, I think if we don't lay off, that will help some. You know, as far as the, the idea of just not just continuing as we are is what, what we're starting, I don't wanna get too far into that, but. Um, rather than, cause we would have normally been at this point anticipating, um. A new agreement with raises, et cetera, et cetera, um. I think hopefully if we don't lay off, that will, um, inspire some confidence in them to like. Just stay at the status quo for now, until we get through this, but yes, ma'am.
Sharon Taylor, commissioner's office, I was in the union for a long time, there were many, many, many years when we were in prison.
I know, I understand that, I've, I've studied it too, and I do think they understand, but I think, you know.
I get it.
We, we need to look at, at, you know, acting in good faith with them and. If, if it's gonna be a, a, um. A frozen paycheck, at least we need, they need to know it's gonna be consistent. And.
Everything has gone up. For everyone.
I'll put myself out there, but I'm gonna tell you, there's not gonna be any layoffs. I'm telling you that as a commissioner. I can see, we know what the numbers are here, commissioners. I think that we can, we can make this work, pull this out. And we'll look at it, you know. Next year, like Commissioner Malloy said, then we have a better idea and opportunity to see, you know, whether, do you hire? Do you, you know, do you freeze, what do you do, so?
Well, I think honestly, I would.
I don't think this is gonna be.
And he will tell you, just, you know, nobody asked me these questions before, maybe I should have made it very clear. I've not been interested in expanding my office. I, I came in at forty-three. At the beginning of the year, I was forty-two. I was doing, I was working hard to make sure. That the areas as much as we could, I would, I did, I never thought of expansion unless I was decreasing some places. And I made sure that we had a net loss. At this point, I don't have any intention of hiring. Uh, anybody else. I, I wouldn't, I, even though we need those people, I'm not gonna replace them. Because I understand what we're at, I had, there's no way that I would do.
Well, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner, I think we're close enough out there, but I see layoffs. That, yes, this has to be, we'll get there.
And, and that's better news for everybody because, I mean, you know, like three, four months ago, I didn't think it'd be this close.
Yeah, and I guess with, with that, I appreciate that saying, and I think all the partners need to keep that in mind. You know, this isn't the time to grow government at all. And I just read a paper though, prosecutor's office just hired Gerard's law director. Is that a new employee the prosecutor's added after we gave you money?
Uh, well, I, just, just to be clear, that's exactly what we told you guys we were gonna do with that extra money is. We had, he was already working, we didn't just hire him. He was already working twenty hours. On, on our staff. He has been.
So he was the fourth time that you wanted.
Correct, so yeah, no, there, there is no new hiring, um, in fact, the, uh. And, and not to build into prosecutor's office, not to get into the whole budget thing for us, because you guys have given us what we asked for and we are happy with that. Uh, but I will tell you the one thing that we do have is still that open position, we just had HR gave us another resume, they, it's come in. It's, uh, it's been vacant and, you know, we've kinda talked a little bit generally in government about this, but right now on the prosecuting attorneys association website. There are ten pages of open positions around the state, so, uh, you know, there's, there's gonna be, um. I don't know how easy it's gonna be to fill, to fill that job, we're gonna try to do that obviously because the commissioners have allowed us to do it, but we are. Hopeful that some of these resumes, one of these resumes will work out, but no new employees other than what the replacements have talked to you about and the increase of hours that one.
I didn't know what the twenty-seven, I ended up that was important.
And that was the. It is not a brand new.
And he's from the auditor's office, he's very well. He helps us quite a bit.
Commissioners, I just wanna make sure that we're, uh, clear on, on what's forthcoming, especially when we're looking into this year, um, I didn't really. Uh, nine-one-one contract is up and that will be negotiated soon. Um, that is gonna be hitting this year, which will be seen for twenty-twenty-six, as well as thirty-one ninety-six. And then we start the cycle of open BAs again. CEOs is up again, um, so it all just keeps, there's no stop. When it comes to union contractual negotiation. It just, it doesn't stop, there's no time where I'm not negotiating the contract, just to be honest with you. So it's gonna keep coming, uh. And again, this is where I, I am. That's why we talked before here, you know, properly, executive session. About contract negotiations because I need to, we need to know, uh, where, where we're headed, what goal is, you know, cause at the end of the day. They are general fund departments, or general fund does not, needs departments, so.
Most employees, when it's this, that, the understanding.
Yeah.
They, absolutely, they don't go in with the mentality that we're just gonna get what we need. They try to, I believe, work with. I don't disagree, but.
So because they know the numbers.
Right. Yeah, they're very.
Yeah, we're not hiding money. They probably know.
Well, it's all public record.
They know the numbers better than we do.
It's very transparent. They may not necessarily.
As far as the commissioners go, Sharon, I know you've been looking at this stuff. We know we got the big deal with banks. Are there any of our categories that look like we're gonna be under or we can move money out of there?
I move everything I can, ask Christie, I'm moving money every week. I have a couple of accounts, we still have the hundred thousand from the public defenders, we, we gave them two hundred thousand, so there's still that. We have fourteen thousand from probate court, that, not probate, that, um, central.
No, it's probate.
Was it probate? The fourteen thousand, now I see there's too many going on up here. Uh, we still have a little bit of money that I can move around. There was, there was a couple other accounts that I can. Potentially get some money moved also. It's not a lot in those two accounts, the big one is the hundred thousand and then the fourteen thousand, that's. Total, I might have a hundred twenty-five thousand or so.
I wanna talk, built into prosecutor's office, I wanna talk a little bit with you maybe after the meeting to, to learn a little bit more about it. You mentioned two things earlier on. The Warren public defender line item.
Yeah, did you see that?
Warren municipal jury fees, I, those are not on my radars, things that. I'm aware of in the statute, so I wanna find out.
Okay.
For example, public defender, that's the discussion we've been having, where they should be paying us.
Right.
The, you know, not us paying them, so I wanna make sure.
This, this.
I have no idea what that is.
I'm looking at all these lines and I, I'm just like mind boggled that we are, we are having to pay all of these things. Forty percent of it, I mean, I figured it out, total. Paper, so I have here too many. I looked at the total for the municipal, municipal courts and what we had. Allocated to them was five hundred and four thousand, four hundred and forty-one, and I looked at it, it's more like almost seven hundred. Thousand per year.
We'll have to talk about those in particular, those are the ones that caught my eye.
Okay.
Uh, commissioners, just for what it's worth, I think you may have gotten some of the stuff I've prepared on it, but. You know, a lot of that is, the majority of that is statutory for the courts, for the bailiffs, for the, um. Uh, judges, things like that that have to come out of county share of state, of state cases essentially.
We're paying more to the employees though than we are to. The judges themselves, because we only have to cover forty percent, but then you have forty percent of, you know. Warren municipal court, they have many employees.
Yeah.
We're paying a significant amount of money to the employee line. So it's, I think that we had it broken down, it was. On the eighty, eighty-two, twenty-five, ninety-nine for the city of Warren per pay period, so that's times twenty-six. Forty-five, eighty-five, twenty-eight, that is to Gerard. Thirty-one, twenty-nine, thirty-nine to, uh, that was Niles. And twenty-seven, twenty-two, thirty-three to Newton Falls. So, and then we also, we pay for their prosecutorial services, so that's on top of that. There, there's a lot of money that we supply to the municipal courts.
They were mandated to do it.
We are in, in many of the cases, the, like I said, those. Take a look at it because those are not ones that I'm aware of.
I was like, mind boggled.
I'm not saying that it's not supposed to be happening, but the, the one in, in particular is the public defender line item, because again. We already are paying, you know, counties paying the public defender its costs, so I don't know why we would pay them additional money.
Um, well, maybe we have a rebate coming back.
I would love it.
I mean, if we've been paying it for.
I guess the only, the only thing I will say, and we'll, we'll have to explore it, is that it's possible, there's cases where the public defender has conflict because there's. Maybe two people charged and it's co-defendants in the case, and if they have to appoint outside. Defense counsel, that may be billed back to, there's maybe a percentage billed back, but we'll double check.
Okay, okay. Yes, I would, I would love that, because obviously these were built-in munis.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this has been going on for years and years and years.
Sure. Okay, um. So the departments. We were gonna talk about. So the main departments.
Yes.
Um, commissioners, we're gonna have to discuss where we're gonna go with.
And, and we'll get back to it.
Yeah, and we'll get back to all the departments, and again, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't panic, I, I think there's enough there for us to get by.
Yeah, we'll be able to.
By Tuesday's workshop, we, we can have a budget commission update, right? You guys are on the meeting Monday, so we can have a fresh figure on Tuesday. And July's figures should be on there by then, and how we did for July.
For what?
For July sales sets.
Is it July? No, what, when we see it.
Have we received it on the twentieth? Okay, that's. Yeah, it would two months, I mean, what we received in July was two months ago, but yes, we already received it, I did the transfer already, it's ready to go on. To the email to you guys with your.
So a little clearer picture then, at least it brings us to month eight. Yeah, and only, only have four months left or four and a half months to figure. And then Tuesday, we can discuss maybe don't have some of this cash on Tuesday.
Just, yeah, just make sure they give us all the figures you can. Check.
Okay, so we appreciate the departments working with the commissioners, commissioners working on the departments, it's what it's about. Getting able to work together with one another and not getting crazy, you know, with. You know, any kind of chaos or animosities. It's all about working together. Um, then we appreciate our, 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 Sharon, you helping with this, Alex. Lisa, everybody involved in our, in our team. And the commissioner Bernard, we appreciate Commissioner Bernard for bringing her. He did eat all the salad today, I didn't eat all mine.
Yeah, I didn't eat it at all, it was fake.
Okay, you need a motion?
Jeremiah.
Motion is your second.
Senator Bernard?
Yes.
Senator White?
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.